Technical difficulties.
There you guys go. Great, well, thank you so much. That's a very nice conference room. The only problem with conferences like that, but the same thing at City Hall is you can't tell who it is until you come close to them. So, thank you so much. Yeah, yeah. So, I'll call this meeting to order. This is the Health and Human Services Subcommittee Meeting of the City Council. And here, we're here to discuss this Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. And I wanted to, first of all, acknowledge and thank Jamie and Katie Shea, who came out to the Indian Orchard Citizens Council last week. I think it was last week. Time flies. But they came to the Citizens Council meeting and they did a really great presentation. And it actually helped me. I learned a few things myself, which I was very grateful for. So I want to thank Jamie and I want to thank Katie for coming out and doing that. A few of the constituents in the, in the audience, our residents did have some questions and they were able to answer them. So I want to thank you for that. And I guess maybe I would encourage you to reach out maybe to other citizens councils and see if they might be interested in having you come out. You know, getting to the people. And I'll probably have you back out again in a few months, maybe. Because they really liked that after the meeting I talked to them. So, where do we want to start today? Do you guys want us to have any updates?
Well, we don't, I thank, thank you for, for being so gracious about Jamie and Katie. And we do have a program where we go to other citizens councils and other groups as well. So we're, we're pretty active in that and we agree that is one of the best ways we get our word out there and, and really keep the confidence of people in what we're doing and the services we provide. So we're appreciative of having the opportunity to be able to do that. And really, one of the most fulfilling things about our job is being out in the public with the people we serve. So we're, we're glad to participate in that. As far as updates, no real updates from the last time we met in, in September. There's no new sampling data that takes place. It's quarterly sampling. The updates that we have are that we've received our 90% plans, which are under review. And we're getting closer to bidding this project. It's with DEP for their review as well right now. So we need to get several permits from the Department of Environmental Protection. And, and so they, they have the plan, the 90% plan. So we're in the last, the last push here to finalize the plans and the bidding package. We anticipate bidding the project at some point in February. So we're in the last push. Things are progressing. We're on schedule in terms of what the design is and are feeling pretty good with where we are. There's still quite a few hurdles in front of us from a regulatory review standpoint and a financing standpoint. But we're, we're coming into the end here and should be bidding this in February. And I think with an award next summer and construction starting right then.
And I think that's one of the questions that came up, Josh, is the, the timing of that, right? Because of the water quality levels and so if, you said construction in the summertime possibly. So we're still looking at 2028, I think we said, or 2025?
No, no, you're looking at, I think it's August of 2028. Maybe CJ, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But I think it's August of 2028 is the projected completion date.
Okay, yeah. So that's, you know, of course, our residents are concerned about, you know, continuing to drink the water and the levels that are continuing to increase. But again, I think Jamie and Katie gave a really good explanation about that and, and about the, the chlorine that's going in there now. So that's, that's our main concern. And I think that's the reason that we need to, you know, just continue to stay in touch and continue to help the public, you know, be a little bit at ease about our water. So.
Sure. Yeah, a couple of things, counselor, just so, you know, and, and maybe this helps clarify and, and maybe it doesn't. The, the levels have been pretty steady where we are. So the levels aren't increasing. We, we do see some seasonal increase, but we're, we're typically very close to what the limits are. So it's not like we're 10 times what the limit is. We're, we're right on the borderline of, of being within compliance at times during the course of the year. I think during this quarter in particular, there's a fall turnover in the reservoir. And we generally see increased organics at this time of year. But it, it's really a function of so many different variables. It's hard to predict. But it's, we've never been like five times of what the limit is. We've always been at or very close to what the MTL limit would be. And then in terms of, of our customers' exposure, again, all of, all of the literature that's out there, there is no acute risk here. This is, the risk is over a lifetime. We're talking, we're talking decades and decades. Not a single decade, but multiple decades of exposure at high levels. And I think we can say with good certainty that that's not going to be the case. That, you know, by the time when we finish this treatment plant, the risk will be eliminated completely. And so I, I think that's a, that's just an important thing for us to just keep. It may sound like it's a lot of repetition, but it is, it is a fact. We're going to eliminate this risk. And it's not as if the risk will have been present for decades for any of our customers.
Right, right. And I, I'm sorry, I forgot to acknowledge Counselor Tim Allen is here with us. Thank you for joining us, Tim, as is Commissioner Helen Carlton Harris. Yeah, thank you for that. And I know that, you know, mitigating the, the, the risk is what we want to make sure happens, you know. And again, I think from the last time that we talked, there's no way to do that, you said, right? Even if they, even boiling it and all that stuff is not going to help. So thinking about that. I, a question that came to my mind when you were just talking about that, Josh, is when did we start having to put chlorine in the water? And those, of course, the water, water quality went down. Do you know what year that was?
Oh, I mean, we've been putting chlorine in the water for 100 years.
Okay, so what is it that you're doing now that's different, that's causing the increase in those levels?
So the difference. The difference now is that there's more organics in the water than there were before. And that, that's the big difference, right? So chlorine, the chlorine that we utilize and, and I'll just, I'll let staff jump in and don't be afraid to interrupt me if I'm off target on this. Because at times I really have not a great deal of expertise in this. But the chlorine has, has been modified here and there over decades. But it's the organics that we're seeing increase. And, and I think we've said this a few times before, but just the changes in climate have really changed how organic matter, the stuff that, the leaf litter and the stuff that's in the forests, gets washed into the reservoir. The types of storms we see now are washing more of that organic matter into the reservoirs than we've ever seen before. And so it's, it's more organics in the water versus more chlorine in the water. So that's how that reaction to form DBPs is happening more often and more rapidly now.
And I could just add to that one thing. So even if you think back to the storms of, say, the 38 hurricane or the 54 hurricane, when, so even if there was chlorine in the water and the organics were high then, we weren't testing for these things back then. Because this regulation, currently, the way it's currently set up now didn't start until 2012. So even the.
So again, sorry. Okay, and, and I guess that brings me to, to my, the question that I wanted to ask, I guess, is, so when did we start realizing that the, the numbers were higher than they needed to be? And if we just started testing in 2012, this is, it was 12, 11, 13 years ago. But it's been happening all along. So we could potentially have been drinking this water for decades and decades and decades because of the standards weren't there, right? So those are the kind of concerns that I have and that my constituents have. But I just want to let, Counselor Allen, do you have any questions or do you have any, anything you want, any comments?
Counselor, could I just, Counselor Allen, before, before you ask, could I just answer one of Counselor Goldin's questions? We began sampling in 2012, but we didn't get an issue, we didn't have our first issue till 2018. And then we had on and off compliance from 2018 into sometime in late 2019, 2020. And then we'd been fairly consistent since then. So it's really just since 2018. So there was a period of time where we were using chlorine as we have, but we were not, and, and measuring, and we're not having violations of this standard. So I don't think it's been going on for decades and decades. I think it started in 2018 because we had already been measuring for six years and hadn't, hadn't, hadn't tipped the balance to be in non-compliance until 2018.
But if, if I'm not mistaken, I think that you said that the standards changed at a certain time. And I'm not sure when that was. So.
There were, there, there were no standards until 2012. But in 2012, we started measuring and we found, we found no issues from 2012 to 2018. Is that right?
Okay, there was a DVP rule starting in 1999, but the stage one rules had a much higher level. If we were still under stage one, we, we would be in compliance. Because they were, say, 80 and 100, and now we're at 60 and 80 for HA's and THM. So like, we would definitely still have been in compliance as the rule was in 1999, under stage one disaffection by.
Okay, sorry, Counselor Allen.
Yeah, I'm okay. I just was casting someone here in the hallway. So I, I don't have any further questions for now. I'll catch up with you in a little while.
Okay, okay. All right, great. So, all right, yeah, so I think continuing to have these conversations. I know that it might be a pain, but I think letting the public know, like, you know, these, the, the standards and, and the timelines and all that, that's what they're concerned about, right? Because we've been living in, I've lived here all my life since I was three. And I know that we had the best water in the country. I would venture to say the world, right? And it didn't taste like chlorine and stuff like that until it did start changing. So those are, those are the, the things that we don't know, right? We don't know water. We don't know about testing. We don't know about the quality. The only time that we have an issue is when something happens to it. And that's what I think we need to be aware of. Another concern that came up at the meeting that we didn't talk about really, and I, and Jamie and Katie, this question wasn't asked, but I always get asked about it, right? And that is the, the rate hikes that are going to be coming. And that's really concerning to the community because, of course, you know, they can't afford much more. So is there any way that we might be able to mitigate that? Help them to not necessarily have to be overwhelmed by it when it does happen?
Sure, you know, I, I think the, the process, as you're aware, as a city councilor, every spring when we develop our, our rates, we send a package over to the mayor and to city council for them to review. And over the past handful of years, we've done a, a meeting with, with the city council at their request to go through the budget and answer questions. And then we have a public budget hearing and, and that's really the process. But one of the, one of the things that we have really done over the past couple of years and especially during COVID, but it's gone beyond that now, is to make sure that any of the residents that truly cannot afford water have an opportunity for several of the programs that we utilize and provide just from us. And then we've really done a nice job working with other agencies, advocacy agencies, that also provide help and service to customers who have, have problems affording any of their utilities. And, and that's Valley Opportunity Council, Wayfinders and several others. And so we've had a really good relationship building with them to, to push some of our customers to them. But internally here at the commission, we have several, several programs for folks. One, we, we have a customer assistance program that will provide up to 25% credit for your water bill if you meet the criteria for heating assistance. Right? And so we dovetail that right in with what Valley Opportunity Council is doing for heating assistance. So if you're a customer of ours and you provide, and you provide us your heating assistance letter, which, which has, you know, financial indicators for, for that household. If you meet that criteria, we automatically give you 25% credit towards your total annual bill for water and sewer. We also have a discount for seniors, which I think is how much now, Jamie? So just under $100 a year. We have programs for disabled, disabled veterans as well to give them, I think it's also, what is that? Is that also $99? Yep. So there's a variety of programs that we have. And I, and I think in the larger conversation is that water, producing clean water and cleaning dirty water costs a lot of money and it's not a free service. And as we continue to moderately and meaningfully and thoughtfully raise rates so that you're actually paying the value of what the clean water costs, we're very cognizant of those that can't afford it and are continually looking at what our policies are for those that truly can't afford the water to be able to help them in a number of ways. And I think we've done that. And I think part of the discussion is what is the value of water to people? Like it, it, there, there's a cost to providing clean water. And we don't get any free money from anybody. The, the water that we produce is paid for by the people that pay the rates. There's no, there's no aid. If you think about how a city budget works, you know, more than half of the city budget comes from state aid. We, we don't get any state aid in relation to what our budget process is. So everything that we collect through our billing process pays for the improvements that you see. And we, we, we are, we carefully manage that. And we do our best to make sure that our rates are stable. So we, we do give a look ahead to three years in what our capital program is and what our rate structure is going to look like. So we're, we're trying to keep stable rates. So that instead of having a 14% next year and then a 3% and then a 12%, we're really trying to keep it between that 5 and 8%. And have been able to do that even in spite of COVID and the global pandemic and all of those impacts. We've started this process for the water treatment plan prior to COVID. We're, we're still relatively on schedule. We've slipped maybe six or eight months in a four-year span. And the budget has increased wildly, but our rate projections have not. And that is key, that we've, we've reconfigured what our capital program is so that we can maintain the rates that we said that we would within, within a percent or two. And, and that is a constant struggle for us, but we really pride ourselves on making sure we have rate stability. So there's not wild increases in rates. And even through the pandemic that we've done it. So not to go on and on, the, the keys to us are rate stability, value in the water that you're paying for and making sure that the people who truly can't afford to pay their water bill have a safety net. And we continuously look at all of three of those main pieces and do our best to make sure we're, we're doing our jobs in that respect.
Thank you. And Katie, I'm taking notes. Okay, yeah, thank you for that. So we'll just keep an eye on that, you know, we'll just continue. I look forward to looking, reviewing what you, what you'll be submitting this year. We are starting budget season, it seems, and this is the time, I guess, to look and to see what we can do. So, okay.
Yeah, we, 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 we like to engage in that process. So come springtime, you guys will get the package and we're glad to speak to, to folks about that. And you're welcome to participate in the public participation component of what we do every year.
Okay, great, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions, any comments?
Counselor, I, I just wanted to thank you folks for coming to our open house, by the way. I think that is, I, I, I think that's really important to our staff. And I think that's important for you and your constituents that, you know, you can say, you, you've seen what we're doing up there. You've seen the work. And I think that is, it, it, it's really important. It's important to us. And we, we were really happy to see you folks out there.
Glad that I, I could make it. It was very interesting. The drive was really nice. The folias, I think, was at its peak. I enjoyed it immensely that day. So thank you so much for that, for doing that. Excellent, thank you. Anything else, anyone else?
If I may ask, if I may ask a couple of questions?
Yes, ma'am.
If that's all right. So I'm.
Counselor Allen is muted. He keeps trying to talk, but go ahead, Commissioner.
That's what he.
We're okay with that.
Driving and talking to us.
Right.
So I have a question about the, when's the next sampling due? I guess that would be the first question.
First of the year.
Okay, so in Jan, in January, we'll, we'll be.
Hold on, Sue.
So first week of December.
I'm sorry, the first week of January?
December.
December, so next month.
It takes a few weeks to get the results back.
So we'll know them in January, I guess. And then was the testing done in 2018, the same testing that was done in 2012? Or did that change? So we, obviously, for six years, we had no problem. So the question is whether or not the 2018 testing was different than what happened in 2012?
No, it's the same method. It's been the same method since 1999. It's just that the way the averages are calculated is different in 2012 versus 1999. But the method has been the same for the last couple of decades.
So the method's the same, but the calculation changed? Is that, is that what I heard?
Between 99 and 2012, between 2012 and now, it's all the same method, same calculations.
Okay, so from 2000, I'm just trying to be clear, 2012 to 2018, same method, same calculation, right?
As it is today, too.
Okay. And then this is just a public health question. And I know climate change is impact in terms of many of our waterways. So that certainly is understandable in terms of the organics that are now in our systems. This question is public health and wastewater and COVID. Are you, you're recording the wastewater COVID to, are you reporting it to us? Or I know that it's available. How is it being reported?
So you, there was a program, Helen, that we, we coordinated with you guys. And I, I don't know if they're still doing this. It was like an independent program. They would come in and do the sampling and send it out. And I'm not sure if, we never really looked at that data because it doesn't change how we treat the wastewater. I think that data was some collaboration within the state and, and, and UMass. And if they're still doing it, the data's available to you. But we really, all we had to do was give them a, a permission slip to come in and grab the samples. So.
Okay.
I, I can look, I can ask the folks over at the plant if folks are still getting the samples or not and get back to you. I'll write it down. But we never, that wasn't data that was on our, on our side that we were concerned with. But I know some folks from your department were, were the ones who helped coordinate that.
Yeah, and we did get a report, I want to say in August. So what I hear you saying is that report did not come from you. That report came from state DVH and/or whomever took the sampling and ran the, and ran the report.
Yeah, yeah. It was a third, they had a third-party analytical company doing it.
Well, Josh, I'd appreciate you checking into that for me. I just, I just want to make sure it's still being done and that we're, we're being consistent. So thank you all so much for your time and attention. I'm grateful.
Thank you, Commissioner. Those good questions about that, about COVID though. Go ahead, Counselor Allen.
Okay, yeah, thanks. I've got a couple of different types of questions. The first one is, Josh, what is your, the word I want is, I'm going to use chain of command, but who, who are the, the environmental bodies or whatever that you report to? So for instance, like this 90% estimate of, of the cost. When you get that from your staff or whoever does that, where does that go and who has to approve that?
It's, Counselor, it's not 90% cost estimate. It's 90% design.
Yeah.
That's a standard, that's a standard, industry standard milestone in the design of capital projects. 30, 60, 90, and then bid set. All right, so it's, it's an internal, those are internal milestones in design process so that you're progressing, you have lists of things that you're checking off to make sure they've been adequately addressed and that certain changes. And as you progress through those milestones, your, your construction cost estimates get more and more accurate because you have more certainty in what you're building because the design has advanced.
Yeah, I, I, I follow that. I just want to know who, who is your first line you report that stuff to? Is it EPA? Is it DEP? What other bodies are involved in approving that?
It's an internal document. DEP ultimately has a technical review of the project because they, they will give permits. They're also helping to finance the project as well, but that's, that's a separate entity. So DEP will give a permit and CJ, I forgot the name of the permit, but there's a permit review, a technical review of the design. And in order to expedite that, typically you would give DEP the 100% bid documents and have them review it. But for our, in this instance, because we're trying to maintain schedule, we've included them in all of the milestones in design so that they're familiar with the project, so that when they get final plans, they're going to look at the, the, you know, in theory, they're going to look at what has changed between 90 and 100%. And they should be able to turn it around quickly and give us our permit so we can go to bid.
So that's, so it's DEP is your answer?
For, for certain, for permit, but the, the, the internal milestones of 30, 60, 90, or whatever people choose to do, that's just industry standard in design. You never just design something to 100% and then throw it in somebody's lap and say, here it is.
Yeah, I believe, I believe that. I get all that. I'm just trying to figure out who, who has to approve that stuff. So your answer is DEP?
DEP approve, DEP has to approve us to bid it out because it's a change, it's a modification in treatment. So DEP has authority to approve or disapprove anything that has to do with water treatment.
Okay, so, all right, so that was a, a follow-up question on that. So DEP, since this letter has been coming since 2018, when we had our first failed test or whatever, when you, before you send a letter to us or give us a forewarning that there's a letter coming out, does that also go to DEP? And is that also, are they fully aware of the issues we've, we've had with getting clean water reports?
100%, 100%. The notification that you get, that you refer to as the letter, the public notification that you get is mandated by DEP. So before it comes to you, there is an exchange with DEP and a notification to DEP of our sample results. And then we'll, we'll, we'll get a formal notice of non-compliance from DEP. And it also requires, in between those two steps, is the public notification.
Okay. I'm familiar with DEP because in the biomass project, which I was heavily involved with fighting against, you know, the first couple of years of my council term, we dealt with Mike Gorski. He ran the Springfield office. Is that the same office you're referring to?
That's correct.
Okay. And last week at East Forest Park Civic Association, we had a member of DEP, I didn't set this up, Frank Ryan set it up, but we had a member of DEP come and present to us on water. It wasn't so much drinking water as, it was more of the, you know, groundwater and wetlands and that sort of stuff. But he came and I was just, for me, being on the council for a while, I was just like circling back and hearing the same name. Mike Gorski was still running that office. So, so that's the same office you deal with. Okay. And the letter that we get from them, can you just say, how many other communities would you say are, besides the ones that, you know, Ludlow and Long Meadow, etc., yours? How many other communities are struggling with this issue?
Yeah, there, there's a hand. So a, a couple of things, just so we're, we're clear. So Mr. Gorski is the Director of Western. So uh Mr. Gorski is the uh Director of Western Region, Wiro, Western Region of DEP. But a lot of the, when it comes to the way DEP's structure is, he's, he's responsible for all of his staff in the Western Region. But on the water side, it rolls up under the Water Division within DEP. So although we deal with the Western Region and Mr. Gorski, we also deal with Headquarters DEP as it relates to the Drinking Water Program. And there's a head of the Drinking Water Program and then they have staff. And then there's regional staff that work under, underneath that umbrella of um the Drinking Water Program. So um ju- just so you have an understanding, they have their own table of organization. Um, so we're, we, we deal with both Headquarters of DEP out of Boston and with um, and with the local, um, the local folks. And then um just remind me, what was your, what was your last question, I've already forgotten?
Uh, that was, that was basically it, uh, on that line of questioning was, was basically the organizational stuff and, and who, I mean, you know, I know this, we, we, it's a good debate all day how important this is and how it has to happen over decades for it to be a problem. But our constituents think it's a problem today. And um, you know, so we have to be ready to answer their questions and be doing our due diligence like Zaida did last week with having you guys come out there, like we did last week at East Forest Park to have the uh, the uh, you know, um, DEP come to that meeting. So it's just good to know where the, where the button is, you know? If this was a city department, it would be clearer for us. Um, you know, before, before it was privatized to create the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission, it probably would have been clearer for us. I wasn't around then. Um, but uh to figure out where the authority is and where the, you know, yeah, I mean, one of the things that has been a problem for me to swallow on this whole thing has been, besides it, nobody likes the letter, I know you guys don't like it, we don't like it. But it's puzzling to me how we could be in a situation in November of twenty-three with a solution that we're creating, which hasn't started yet. Uh, it's just amazing. That, that's all, just let me finish, just let me finish, Josh, don't interrupt me. Uh, that's just something I personally struggle with, that this is not started our longtime solution. We're basically buying into five more years of these letters as intermittently as they might come out. So I'm just trying to figure out who else is in the, in the camp with us that keeps uh, they, you know, I mean, nobody likes this. It's just like, where, you know, where is the, what happens? I don't deal with any other water system, just with you guys. And I know you're working hard on it, there's no, no dispute on any of that. Just trying to figure out, um, you know, where decisions are made. Uh, there was, there was one point where we were gonna tweak the plant and, you know, make enhancements to the plant and, and the date was gonna be two thousand twenty-five. And I was dealing with you at that point. And the next year, you guys have made a decision, I guess, uh, to make a new plant, which pushed it out to two thousand twenty-eight. And that was, to me, a decision that I could question just because of the health ramifications of pushing it out three more years. So it's not, as good as it sounds and spiffy and it's gonna be great, and I, I love all that part of it. I just don't like waiting as long as we're waiting for it. And um, and it's that, to my point of, we have an ultimate solution and we think it's gonna be great. Well, we haven't started on it yet, beside, I, construction, I know we're doing the planning and stuff. So that's, that's the spirit of my questions is that, you know, should I have been more pointed myself a few years ago? And said, that's too long, that's too long, we need you to do it faster for our constituents. Um, so now we're dealing with the net effect of it. And as good as um, you know, Jamie is and Katie, we've had them out at a couple of my civic associations in the last couple of years. Um, as good as they are and as good as your plans are and stuff, we somehow, i- i- it's two thousand eighteen, we found the problem. It's twenty-three, five years later, and we still haven't started fixing the problem. And that's the part that is hard for me to swallow. And I, I've mentioned that to you intermittently in the past. And I'm just trying to figure out who else is in the game with you, who else has to approve that? Who else is accepting? It's like saying we accept that these letters are gonna keep coming out for five more years. Presumably, if, if the, the, you know, the ultimate solution will, will work and presumably the timing will stay um, will, you know, will stay on, on schedule. So not trying to be a pain in the butt, I'm just saying, that's where I, that's what's going through my head. Like, why did I let this go five years before? And um, and it wasn't my choice, but we've, you know, we've had these discussions, you and I've had these discussions for three or four years. Um, and so that's all, that's, I had another line of questioning, but that's it on that one, if you want to make any more comments on that.
Yeah, I, 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 I'll mention a couple of things. So when the commission was formed, we weren't privatized, so we are a public entity, you know that. So we're very sensitive to be, being said we were privatized. We're a public entity, we're public servants and we serve the public, just so we're clear on that. Because I think when you say privatized, that provides misinformation at times to the folks, to your constituents. And they say, oh, they're out for profit. So it's important to understand that we serve the public and we're a public agency. As far as you said, who else has these issues, uh, on and off since two thousand eighteen, especially relative to the changes in climate and the type of storms we've been having. Um, there've been about a half a dozen communities, to my understanding, that have been in and out of non-compliance with the BPs. I think um some of the folks from UMass in, uh, and I forget where it was. Um, but they, they, it is not uncommon right now in all of New England to be having disinfection byproduct issues due to weather, and that's not uncommon at all. I don't have the exact number, a few years ago, we had pulled those numbers together and it was happening um very broadly. I think two years ago during the summer of twenty-one, when we had record rains, which we just had again. Um, so i- it's not uncommon, it's not everybody, it also depends on the type of surface water um body that you have. Um, I, I, I would say that um, in terms of dealing with your, your constituents and talking about the health impacts, I think it's part of, we're, we're happy to uh meet with you guys. I think it's part of y- your guys' responsibility to, to help educate them and to listen to what we're saying. And when we're telling you that, you know, none of these things can be solved in two, three, or four, or five years. That to design a water treatment plant, to design modifications to a water treatment plant, that's not a six-month, that's not a six-month, one-year or two-year process, that takes years, Counselor. So for those of us that are in this business and understand the scale and magnitude of these projects, none of this stuff happens overnight. And I can assure you that um the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection and the United States Environmental Protection Agency are well aware of every single notice that's gone out, well aware of what our construction schedules are, well aware of what our design schedules are and are tuned into everything we are doing. They get a newsletter from us quarterly specifically just for the regulatory compliance component that they get from us, so they know exactly what we're doing. And so until you folks start listening to what we're trying to tell you is, this thing is going as quickly as it can. It may seem like a long time for people who are not in the, in the water and wastewater construction business. This thing is flying through a pandemic. We've lost six months, six to eight months through a pandemic. So I, I, I'm, I'm not taking exception with the perception that you think this is taking a long time. But for those that are educated in this business, this thing is, is rolling really, really quickly. And I think it would be helpful for you to embrace that and, and let your constituents that have concerns know that this is the process, that none of this happens overnight. So I, I would implore that as we continue to give you guys information and answer all of your questions, that you listen to it and you give it back to your uh constituents that are asking those questions. Because the truth is that it just takes a long time to build a three hundred and twenty-five million dollar water treatment plant. And although construction hasn't started, um, this work has begun from before the pandemic.
So, so Josh, um, I guess, thinking about the question that Counselor Allen asked, um, so what other communities are getting these letters? Because I know that we share some, you know, some of the systems with other towns and cities, correct?
Yeah, so Counselor, outside of the, the ones that we serve, there are still a handful on and off over the past handful of years in Massachusetts that have had the issues. There's some in the, uh, farther west and I, I think a couple in the northeast. And, and if you want, I, I can look that up over the past couple of years. It's also available on D, DEP's website.
Okay, now I just wanted to know, cause I know that you serve East Long Meadows, so I imagine they're getting the same letter we're getting.
Yes, yes.
Okay, 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 all right, thank you. Um, let me see, thank you for that. And um, and I agree, you know, we need to be able to um communicate with, you know, the public and, and have them learn about this. But when they ask me about it, I'm gonna say, I don't know, I got the same letter and I don't know what it means. Um, so that's why I keep coming back to you and asking you and wanting to make sure, you know, that our constituents, that we're safe, right? Cause we're all drinking the same water. Um, and I hate, you know, the fact that we have to pay for water, but I like what you said as far as we're paying for clean water, right? Because we can't just go to the river and pick up some water and drink it. Um, so we are paying for clean water and I understand that. Um, so when our constituents ask us, um, but again, I encourage um everyone to go out to the neighborhood centers, you know, I might have Jamie come back in July and say, hey, now we got the approval, now we're gonna start doing the construction, you know? Because um, we're on pins and needles, you know, cause we've seen what's happened across the country. Um, when, you know, nothing's been done and, and I'm really glad that we're doing something here and that we're doing something in the city um to help our future, you know? But in the meantime, we're still dealing with this, we're still gonna be getting the letters. Whenever you, you guys send a letter out, when I get a letter, I, I brace myself for all the calls and all the um, you know, contacts that are gonna be made to me. Um, because it's, and it's almost like the same thing every month. So I appreciate, you know, you guys being here and coming out here um and continuing to come out. So I, you know, I'm, I'm, I look forward to continuing to meeting with you all and I hope you guys don't mind that.
No, no, I, I, I mean, we're here to serve, so um, I, I think it's appropriate every quarter, like every quarter, if, if we have a new notice that goes out, like I, I, you know, call us and say, can we do a meeting? And I, I think we'd be glad to get there. One thing that just is popping into my mind, Counselor, is maybe we'll just get like a, a quick FAQ. Um, and we may already have it for, for you, but why am I getting this notice? I think we asked that question actually in the letter, in the notice itself. You may ask yourself why you're getting this notice and then we, we say that in the notice. But we'll, we'll try to put together just like a, a little brief thing um that summarizes the stuff that we've tried to convey to you all. Um, simply so that you can, when somebody says, well, why am I getting this notice? You can say kinda simply, here's why you're getting the notice. And this is what the Water and Sewer Commission is doing. And, and I always just say, when we deal with, you know, the value of water, um, people don't have a problem paying a hundred and fifty or two hundred dollars for internet and cable TV a month or for their cellphone. Um, but they seem to have a problem paying less than that for their water. And so when we think about like, why, why do we raise rates and why is it so expensive? You can't make it through a day without water. And, and water i- i- it's harder and harder and more expensive to produce clean water every day that goes by because of the impacts of the environment and because of regulatory change. And, and that's all fine, but it helps for our elected officials i- if they can help convey that message, it's like you're getting value out of your water. It's not a free commodity. It takes a lot to, to, to create clean water and have clean waterways for the citizens of Springfield and surrounding communities. So I, it's just, it's important and it's one of our biggest struggles is trying to convey what the value of water is to people. And, and what's more important, is it flushing your toilets and getting a clean glass of water or your cellphone or your cable?
Well, that's not a fair, fair, fair uh assessment because, you know, everything is going up. Food, you go to the grocery store, I was just talking to someone, they had a, a, half their carriage was full of food and it was two hundred dollars. So, you know, when the cable bill goes up, the internet goes up, water bill goes up, the light bill goes up, that's a lot for people who are on fixed incomes, the seniors who aren't getting an increase in their income. You know, one Counselor Allen once said, well, maybe they can get another job and pay their property taxes. What if they already have three jobs and they still can't afford an increase in, in their stuff? So, you know, I think the, 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 the residents that are complaining, they're homeowners, right? So they have property taxes, they have, you know, um, trash bills, they have trash fees. And everything going up is, 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 is hurting them, you know? And they're not, they don't qualify a lot of times for the programs that you guys have available to, you know, low-income residents. So it's just, you know, I don't think that we should, you know, um, put that assessment on, on our people. You know, what's more important, cellphone, but now a cellphone, that's all we have, we don't even have house phones anymore, so that's it. You know, so just, I think being mindful of, people are struggling. This has been a tough time, coming out of the pandemic, it's been tough. You know, we had an inflation, I know people didn't want to call it that, but I think it was an inflation. You know, rates were, interest rates were so high that it was ridiculous. So just, you know, being mindful of that and keeping in mind that, you know, people are complaining because they need to, right? Because there's no other option for them, they have to buy food, they have to pay their property taxes, they have to pay their water bills, right? Because we do need clean water. Um, but just being, being mindful of that and maybe finding ways to help mitigate that. You know, if not with the water bill, with something else, property taxes, it's tax season, so I'm gonna get ready to uh take that fight on. But um, you know, doing all of that at once, I think in the, in the, in the end, I think our residents will be happier and they'll be happy to pay for clean water, you know, um, and hopefully they can afford it.
Point, point taken, Counselor.
Thank you, sir, thank you. All right, well, I want to thank you all, I hate to keep anybody over an hour for a meeting. And it is three twenty-four, so I just again want to thank you all for coming out. Um, thank you, Counselor Allen, Com- Commissioner Ha- uh Carlton Harris had a meeting at three thirty, so she left. And um, I'll see you guys maybe soon.
Good, that, thanks, everybody, thank you.
All right, have a good afternoon and happy Thanksgiving if I don't see you.
Bye, guys.